So I'm going to turn it over to Chief Spalding, who is with Deputy Chief Halverson, to be able to give the presentation.
Mayor, members of council, Jeff Spalding, your police chief. And seated to my right, as a reminder, is Eric Halverson, my deputy chief. And throughout the presentation, after I touch on a topic, I will ask my deputy chief also to weigh in if I have missed something or he would like to add something as well. We've both been working very closely on this topic and fielding questions. And he's been a great resource for me, not to mention the historical knowledge. So I just wanted to share that. So I'll start off by just saying thank you for this opportunity to present information again on this very important topic. This is a follow-up to the last presentation. Most of the material is new. It is based on information and questions that I've received, not only from members of the community, but also from our city council and our mayor. I'd also like to remind anybody that might be watching that information from the previous meetings that I've provided to council is available on the city's website, along with the police department's website. It touches on many of the topics that people have questions about. So I would encourage you to look at those documents as well. Some of the topics that we'll be talking about tonight do fall into what we refer to as kind of the legal gray area. So I'll just remind those that our city attorney Blair Henningard is on the phone as well. So if there's some questions that I can't answer, I'll defer to him. And if there's some questions that maybe require some more research, I'd be more than happy to dig into those and then provide a response at the next meeting. So in between each topic, I have quite a few different topic areas. I will pause. And members of council, if you would like to join in, so we don't get too lost in all the data. You know, I prefer to do it that way, just so if there are questions or concerns, anything you want to share with me, and then we'll just jump to the next topic as well. And again, don't hesitate to interrupt me at any part during the presentation. I'd be more than happy to answer the questions. So I will just start out by just talking a little bit about our protest response and plan. We've been asked questions about, do we have a plan? What is our protest response? What is our philosophy? And I will say that one of the most important things we do is even before we even have a protest, in most of the cases, you know, we've been fortunate to have the opportunity to work very closely with the protest organizers. Groups like INCA and some of the other ones have been peaceful protesters. They work with us. We encourage them to find the appropriate locations to keep them safe, keep our community safe. And that's worked very well. In some of the more recent protest events, we've actually had some conversations with some of the individuals who we've even asked if the police department would like to be involved as part of their movement. And I explained to them that, you know, we, regardless of the position we take personally, it's critical that as a police organization that we remain neutral and apolitical, although we will support them the best way we can to keep them safe and to be present for any needs that they might have. As it's no surprise that we are seeing a different trend in protests in general. What we've typically seen in the past are peaceful protests, individuals that may be protesting government or the police or just simply protesting towards a cause. But the new trend that we're now seeing are the addition of counter protesters. And that has created some additional challenges. So in addition to trying to prevent, you know, violence from some of protest groups, which we haven't seen a lot of, now we also have to work towards preventing violence between the two different protesters and the counter protesters. So that's added some additional challenges as well. Additionally, we're seeing new trends in crowd management. Crowd management is the new term versus crowd control. And it involves a lot of different areas of dealing with the whole issue. A lot of it is how we present ourselves, how we manage the crowd versus trying to control and avoiding arrests and those types of things. One of the things that, you know, we hear a lot is, you know, police officers come to, you know, these, some of these protests. We hear more in Portland, but they come to these protests looking like they're ready for a fight just because of their gear. Oftentimes, police officers are required to wear safety gear. And as a matter of fact, it's actually a requirement of OSHA that officers have to wear certain protective equipment for special events like that. So there's a reason for it. But part of the current conventional wisdom is that we want to come into these situations and have as low key profile as possible and to send the message that we are there to be neutral and just to keep the peace and avoid those types of confrontations with us being the targets. So one of the, probably part of the biggest conversation we've had over the past couple of weeks, where I've been fielding a lot of email, a lot of phone calls, what have you, is our actual response to these events. One of the things that we do try to avoid is actually engaging with people who are, in many cases, would be the counter protesters or those that have, in some cases, violent tendencies. And there are different types of low-level offenses that we have made a conscious decision to actually not engage in. And these are the types of things like whether it be jaywalking, loud noise, very, very minor confrontations with individuals. It's a, there's multiple reasons why we do that. Number one, we don't want to engage with the individual who oftentimes may be looking for a fight and looking for a challenge and wants to have their cause picked up by the media. And so that's not something we're interested in doing. There are other reasons as well. And part of that is simply just it's resource-intensive. And when we have limited number of resources in terms of officers, it takes time for an officer to engage somebody, either to pull them out of the crowd and issue a citation or take somebody to the jail. So oftentimes, what we will do if the offense is at a level that we choose to engage, we will pull the person aside, take the information, document it in a police report, and then we will send it to the district attorney's office, who will make the ultimate decision whether somebody will be charged. What, you know, this, in effect, has the same effect as if an officer were to make a physical arrest. What we're seeing right now in the COVID-19 times is that when we take relatively low-level type offenses to the county jail, they issue them a citation, release them, and they also encourage us to release people on citations. So arrests are the exception. And it's, it works out well in terms of, you know, managing our resources accordingly. So we have to be careful on that. There are some specific types of events, there are types of crimes that people are asking us about, why aren't we taking certain actions? We've been involved in a lot of conversations over the last couple of weeks with our city attorney, with the district attorney's office, doing our own internal research. And we will adjust our policies as needed. But I will tell you that some of the things that we hear relatively frequently are such things as, you know, can an individual use a bullhorn and shout right in somebody's face? And in most cases, depending on what they're saying, we can't regulate their freedom of speech, but the conduct can potentially reach the level of a disorderly conduct, same as some other offenses such as spitting on somebody and other types of low-level offenses. So I'll get into some of those in a little bit here. So we have to be very careful about what we're able to engage in and make sure that it's of appropriate magnitude. But at the end of the day, there is a line that we will not allow people to cross. And that involves any violence, especially something more than a low-level assault, any other inappropriate behavior that rises to the level of at least a misdemeanor-type crime. And we will take action in those certain circumstances. Again, there will be occasions where if it's something that we feel that we can just simply document and send it to the district attorney's office for filing, that's an option that we may want to consider as well in order to manage the type of event. So the other part of our crowd management philosophy is also based on our policy. We have an extensive policy manual of over 500 pages. One of the particular policies is First Amendment response. So that's a policy that we also refer to as well when we talk about a plan. Cover a couple more of the, we also talked about some of the other potential violations that can include, or misdemeanors can include disorderly conduct, as I mentioned, menacing and harassment. So that would be unwanted physical contact, such as the spitting. So I'm going to talk about open carry in a little bit here, too, because that's been a hot topic as well. I'm going to pause there just for a second to see if there's any questions or thoughts. Okay. So another area I know that's very concerned.
Hey, Chief. Well, since you touched on the behavior like shouting in someone's face with a bullhorn and then the line of a physical altercation. So maybe you're going to address it later. But regards to the physical altercation that took place Saturday a week ago, I know there's been a lot of questions out in the community about the status of that and how decisions are made, whether to take action at the time. And then how, people don't really understand, well, what, how is a decision made whether to file charges? So can you explain a bit how investigations are done and how they get sent across the street to the DA?
Absolutely. So in that particular event, it was a, it was a kind of a mini melee at the time. And there was a lot of individuals involved. Actually, we have video from several sources. We had two officers that were working overtime that day. One of the officers actually observed most of the conduct. There was a lot of moving pieces there. And it appeared to be from the video sources and at least from the officer's perception at the time that there was conduct on both sides from the protesters and counter protesters that could be considered investigating the event. Again, this has not been fully investigated, has not been fully reported yet. We're still working on that. I can tell you at the time, and I'm not going to mention any individual's names, but at the time, the officer taking the report had a conversation with one of the victims of the incident. And she told the officer at the time she was not looking to have anybody punished and she simply wanted the report documented. So the officer at that time took the information, advised her that he was going on vacation and that he would pick this up when he got back. In the meantime, I believe that individual may have a different feeling about this now. So it doesn't mean that she can't change her mind and we're still going to pursue it. But the report will be, has already been documented by two of the officers that were there. The officers on vacations returning towards the end of the week. He will finish his report, compile all the video evidence, and this will be presented to the district attorney's office, who ultimately makes a decision who and if anybody should be charged. Eric, having to add to that? Then answer your question, Mayor. Okay, thank you. So the next area that has raised a lot of concern is the whole issue of open carry or carrying firearms or displaying firearms. In Oregon, as many of you know, Oregon is an open carry state, which means that an individual has the right to carry a firearm on their hip or wherever they want, for that matter. It also means that an individual can carry a firearm in or out of a holster. They can have a holster that's at their side. They can't point at anybody. That's a separate crime. The one, a couple distinctions here, of course, are that if you have a carry concealed license, then you can carry the firearm loaded. In the city of Astoria, there is a municipal ordinance that prohibits the carrying of a loaded firearm in the city. So what we're challenged with, though, with the open carry law is that we are restricted from asking an individual that the firearm is loaded. We're also restricted from conducting an investigation or telling the individual they have to take the gun out of the holster. We cannot expand our interview beyond the original reason for the stop. So that presents challenges for us as a law enforcement agency in terms of actually determining if somebody's actually carrying a loaded gun. The other scenario that we often hear is if somebody has a gun out of the holster. And again, it's not illegal to have the gun out of the holster. However, in a protest situation, there may be scenarios compounded with language that an individual uses that can get us to that place where we potentially can have a crime of menacing. So that is a possibility. But what we're hearing for the most part is that the individuals that are open carry are not taking the guns out of the holster. And if we hear differently, we definitely would like to hear that. We will investigate that thoroughly. That's the challenge we're having with the open carry.
I was saying, some of the issues that we're having with regard to loaded firearms have to do with search and seizure law, case law related to that.
Okay, any questions before I move to the next topic?
I did see some questions in the community, just about, in addition to the questions which you've answered, why can't you check to see if their gun's loaded? People have said, you know, why can't you demand to see a permit? And can you just, you touched on it, but can you reiterate what type of permit is required to carry a gun and a loaded gun? And when do you have the right to ask for proof of that permit, if ever?
Right, so the law that governs the prohibition against carrying a loaded firearm in the city is actually a city ordinance. So again, there's very few scenarios where an officer can actually determine where an officer, where an individual is carrying a firearm. If an officer is walking down the street and individuals walking down the street, they're not doing anything illegal necessarily, the officer can do what is called, in the legal terms, called a mirror encounter, where basically an officer can come up to an individual and just have a conversation. The individual is free to leave, and the officer can simply engage in just casual conversation and ask the question if they're carrying a loaded firearm, if he observes a person with a weapon. That individual is in a protest situation, it changes the dynamics of the whole contact because then it would be an argument to be made by the individual being contacted that we're in a protest environment. And clearly, the officer is concerned about the safety of having a weapon in that situation or a firearm. Probably deem that that mirror encounter is not a mirror encounter anymore. So again, up until 2013, the language in that ordinance actually gave the officer the authority to ask the individual if the firearm was loaded and also the individual had to present the weapon so the officer could inspect it. But that was challenged back in 2013 through some Second Amendment constitutional challenges, and that language was removed. So again, it severely limits our ability to investigate that thoroughly. May I answer your question, Mayor?
Yes, thank you. And then I'll just make a comment that after the chief's presentation, when the council's finished asking questions, I am going to open it up to members of the public. I think we have one member of the audience that is physically in a room that would like to ask a question. And also, for the public, we'll just ask you to use the raise hand function on Zoom if you'd like to ask a question. But we'll do that with the public once the chief's presentation is over.
Thank you, Mayor. So the next topic I'll move into is a question that we've received from a few people regards, you know, what is the ability of a city to establish an ordinance that can physically separate the protesters from the counter protesters? So again, we've done some research on that, contacting the district attorney's office, our city attorney, and who also may choose to weigh in at some point. Obviously, there's questions about the constitutionality of doing such an event. Some of the challenges that we've found with enacting an ordinance of this nature is that, well, first off, I'll say that the Constitution does allow the city to regulate the time, place, and manner for public safety reasons. So we can direct groups to protest in certain areas, but that's if we know they're going to be protesting in advance. The city of Astoria does not have a permitting process for the protests right now. So we would have to know in advance. We'd have to have some form of a permitting process where we could then tell them, this is where you're going to protest. This is the time you can do it. And this is the manner you do it. But again, that has to be for public safety reasons. It can't be arbitrary. So that's one challenge. And the, what we've seen in two other cities, I'm not aware of too many cities that are even doing this right now. Portland tried this a couple of years ago. They were challenged, and ultimately, the ordinance was never implemented. They had some issues with it. There's another city in New York, Glen Falls. They actually instituted an ordinance that required the protesters and counter protesters to be 30 feet apart from each other. Their first experience was a significantly large protest, and nobody paid attention to it. It was completely ignored. That would be a challenge for us as well. If we did establish an ordinance, it would be treated as an infraction-level offense. Again, that means the only thing we can do is issue a citation. And if we had a significant group of individuals that weren't abiding by that ordinance, if we had one in place, it would be very challenging for us to enforce it. And for all the reasons I initially stated on enforcing some other relatively low-level type violations. So Mr. Henningard, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, but that's, I think I've recapped what we've talked about earlier.
No, I really don't. Fairly well, Chief. It's almost impossible to regulate these things without getting into a discussion of the content of the protest or counter protest. And that's prohibited by the Oregon Constitution. So whereas we can tell them where they can have their protests or how long they can continue them, we can't say, if you're going to say this, you can sit here and you have to sit there. So it's a difficult area to legislate.
Thank you.
I have a question, if I may.
Go ahead, Counselor.
And I'm not sure if this is a question or just a struggle with understanding. I understand that the, at the foot, the basis of all this is protecting everyone's freedom of speech. So let's say that I'm in favor of no and Counselor Herman is in favor of yes. And I'm on my corner saying, no, no, no. And she's on her corner saying, yes, yes, yes. Clearly, we're both engaging in freedom of speech. If I leave my corner and go to hers, and I loom over her and I scream at her and yell at her and I'm threatening her and doing my best to intimidate her and shut her up, am I still engaging in freedom of speech? Or am I doing something else? That's kind of what I struggle with.
Well, there is an Oregon Supreme Court case that say that there is not a fighting words exception to the Oregon Constitutional Free Speech Amendments. And that, and that case involved something close to what you're talking about. One speaker doing cuss words and calling people names and getting right in their face, telling them where they're going to go and that sort of thing. The Oregon Supreme Court said that's all protected speech. There is a point, obviously, when physical confrontations can become menacing or perhaps harassment or even assault if you're spitting on somebody or. But as the chief said, there's that line that has to be drawn. If it becomes criminal, they can arrest them. But if it's just speaking, even if it's objectionable, the way they're speaking, it can't be sanctioned.
Okay, move on?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So the next topic I know is on a lot of people's minds, and that's the subject of chokeholds. Clearly, that's a topic of national conversation. And I'll just touch on that a little bit right now. There's a lot of different terms for the term chokehold. The one term right now that we have in our policy manual is called a carotid control hold. Now, with that being said, our policy manual is provided by a policy manual service that provides law enforcement manuals for literally thousands of agencies, you know, public safety agencies, police, fire, and other throughout the United States. And this language is provided for anyone who chooses to use it. The language describes how it's used and the situations where it may be used. I will tell you that for all intents and purposes, we do not have a carotid hold policy because we do not train in that policy. And the language in that policy says this policy cannot be used by officers who have not been trained. I have spoken to several officers who have recently graduated from our police academy, and they tell me that not only has it not been trained, they aren't even really that familiar with the term because it hasn't even been brought up. So it's not something that's currently trained. No officers in the Astoria Police Department have been trained in the use of a carotid control hold. So it is not an approved technique for officers to use. So with that being said, we've had recent conversations, always looking to update our policies. And we will, in all likelihood, be removing the language from our policy manual. It's basically ineffective based on the fact that it says we can't use it if no officer's been trained and no officers have been trained in that technique. So next category I just want to touch on is a little bit about use of force. I did touch on this on last meeting, or at least in some of the paperwork that I provided. But I just want everybody to understand this is such an important topic and have everyone understand that this is an area that we, as a police department, take very seriously as well. We have very comprehensive policies on the use of force, use of deadly force, use of control devices and other related areas that encompass over 80 pages in our policy manual alone. So it's everything from the scenarios where you can use force, how to report force. And then, of course, there's even the pieces in there that I've related to before about a duty to intercede, which obviously is a hot topic as well. So that's made abundantly clear in our policy that there is a requirement for officers. Aside from the moral side of it, there's a legal requirement in our manual to report conduct that's inappropriate by other officers. Every use of force in the city of Astoria is required to be reported. Not only is it documented in the police report, it's also memorialized on the officer's body cam. And then we also have a separate use of force policy review procedure. Our threshold for reporting use of force is very low. So of the reported uses of force that we had, for example, in 2019, those include such things even as taking a taser and pointing at somebody, even if they ever have to pull the trigger. A simple warning preceded and a less lethal control device is required in the policy. And if the officer doesn't need to use it, then the officer doesn't need to use it. But we still require the officer to report that as a use of force, and that is reviewed by all of command staff. So the report's done, it's reviewed by the officer supervisor. And then it comes to command staff, we review each one of them. And then we determine whether it's within policy. And then sometimes we'll make determinations that it's with or not within policy. And then sometimes there may even be some additional training may be beneficial to the officer or at least consider other options as well. So that's part of the ongoing training process. We also, the deputy chief compiles all the use of force cases from each year, provides me a list of all the use of forces that were used and makes a determination which ones were within policy. As an example, in 2019, we had 31 reported uses of force. That may sound like a lot to some people. It may not sound like a lot to some people. But when you look at the calls for service we had, which were almost 18,000 calls for service, that's less than two incidents per every 1,000 calls for service that an officer handled. So it's pretty low numbers. And again, that's even based on the low threshold. Anything else to add to that? Okay.
We, so the year-end report for use of force, we do go over our use of forces for the year and look to see if there's any kind of trends or training needs that come out of those reviews and so that we can keep our staff up to date and see if we have issues or we don't have issues.
Thank you. Any questions before I press on? So the next quick little category is in the current conversation we're having on racial profiling and implicit bias. The state of Oregon passed legislation two or three years ago that enacted a program called STOP. And that's an acronym for Statistical Transparency of Policing. So basically, it requires agencies to provide data on every traffic stop and every pedestrian stop, every proactive-type stop. So it's pretty much short of anything other than somebody calling for service or asking us to respond to something. So it's when an officer makes a conscious decision to stop an individual or a vehicle. So the data is collected, such as the individual's race, age, sex, some other statistical data, whether it was a search, if there was an arrest made, location, time, and date, and those types of data. So that's all collected and provided. Our agency side is based on agency side is when it's implemented. For our agency, we are starting that data collection July 1st. All of our software has been updated by our software vendor. We've actually been participating in the beta program for the last year, and I've already started collecting that data. So we are already doing that. So we will be ready to hit the ground running come July 1st. The legislature actually tasked the Oregon State Police with managing the program, and they're with managing the program, and they're doing it through the in conjunction with the State Academy, the Department of Public Safety Standards and Training and the Justice Commission. So that's something I wanted people to be aware of. That is something that departments are tracking, have been tracking long before recent incidents. So the next category I want to touch on is the national conversation on defund the police. I'll be honest with you, when I first saw this, I think I was somewhat concerned about the what I thought was the conversation. But after I dug a little deeper into it, it actually, there's many tenants of this that actually do make sense. There's actually only 16% of the population in a recent poll by the New York Times that feel that the actually defund the police means actually cutting resources from police departments and actually getting rid of police officers. I think what people are looking for, which actually makes sense, is to look at all the needs and the types of calls that police officers have had to respond to over the years, which have been added to their plate, such as calls involved homelessness, mental illness, substance abuse. Those types of calls can probably be better handled by many of our social service agencies because police officers, you know, they they don't have the same training that a mental health professional might have or somebody from a social service agency. So part of the conversation does involve, at least some people are suggesting that the money should be taken from police departments' budgets and put into some of the social service agencies. That may work for some bigger agencies, but I can tell you that that would be a difficulty for some of the smaller agencies. We in Astoria are doing a good job with the amount of officers we have. But I will say that in the last 10 years alone, our calls for service have doubled. And we've only added one police officer in that time. And I'll also say that the job of a police officer has been become extremely much more complex in terms of the types of the requirements that are placed on the officers, the reporting requirements, the legislative unfunded mandates. And one example is just the body cameras. As important as I are and as much as we have embraced them and are happy to have those, it really has doubled the time it takes for a police officer to do their police report now because they have to view the camera footage as they're preparing their report. So those are just some examples of the challenges that we face. We feel that we are doing a good job as a police department, providing service to our community. We're being good as far as reacting to calls, but we could do more with more resources. So I would say that, you know, we would not welcome any defunding of the Astoria Police Department. But at the same time, we welcome resources being used to some of our social service partners who we work very well with, such as Columbia Behavioral Health, Class of Community Action, and those types of entities are very good partners and we work well. I think there are examples, some we've already been talking about through our Homeless Solutions Task Force. And one of them is the homeless liaison officer, which is a great example of a private-public partnership where a civilian individual responds to the homeless-related calls. And the only time we respond are the ones where individuals are being violent, et cetera. So, you know, I guess the last thing I'll say about the defund conversation is the other piece of it we get calls is, you know, are we still involved in the school resource officer program? The city of Astoria ended that program in 2013. Although I will say that this is, we have had conversations with the school district about possibly reengaging in this program. I feel that this is a very good program in terms of building trust in the school. It goes a long way when we talk about police legitimacy, police legitimacy and procedural justice, building trust. And not to mention that, you know, we have a fair amount of calls in the schools and the officers in the schools handle those calls. And then the last, most important thing is identifying threats in the schools before they become bigger problems. So anyway, I know that's not the conversation we're having tonight, but I just wanted to offer my comment on that letter. But everybody know right now, we do not have a school resource officer at the schools. So that's my bit on the defunding conversation. Anything else I'm missing? Any questions, Mayor, Counselor, before I press on?
No, keep on going. Thanks, Chief.
I actually had a quick question about the STOP program, Chief Spalding. I think you mentioned you touched on this, but can you clarify where that data, once it's compiled, is sent? And what's done with it?
I'm sorry, did you say the STOP data, Counselor?
Yeah, so the the data that's compiled from the STOP program, is that, I think you sent it, the data was sent to the to the state?
Right, so the legislature tasked the Oregon State Patrol with managing the program, but they're managing it in conjunction with the Criminal Justice Commission and the Department of Public Safety Standards and Training. So three different entities have been involved in this project. And the data, it doesn't technically, well, I shouldn't say that. It has started for some bigger cities. So it started last July 1st for some bigger cities. Agencies Astoria's size start this July 2020. So the program has already been implemented for some agencies. For us, it starts in a couple of weeks, even though we've been participating, collecting the data over the last year as part of a beta test. The the data in terms of availability, I'm not 100% sure where that data is going to be available to. I suspect just based on the fact that the the T and the STOP is transparency. So I suspect it will be available to anybody that wants the data. But I'll confirm that unless you already know who's got access to that data. Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Is that your question?
Yes.
Next topic is surplus military equipment. This one's easy. The answer is no. We don't have any surplus military equipment. Another area I want to touch on, and again, this speaks a little bit to the, you know, transparency and public trust and police legitimacy is the area of appearance. So two things, I've had some questions on the load-bearing vest. And so that's, it's called an exterior load-bearing vest. Police officers traditionally have worn their bulletproof vest under their uniform shirt. Many, many years ago, at least 20 years ago, there was starting to see studies that showed some of the effects of officers carrying all the equipment on their gun belt. And it was somewhere up in the area of 25 pounds that was weight they're carrying on their hips every day. And we're starting to see officers who were having back and hip problems. Couple different vest vendors and other companies came out with the new, new design load-bearing vest. So basically, the actual vest panels are carried in a ballistic vest that goes over a shirt. And then the equipment is then hung from the shirt by Velcro for the most part. So most of that weight now is carried on the officer's shoulders, taking the weight off their hips. So there's a medical reason that the load-bearing vests were introduced many years ago. And now most law enforcement agencies have adopted that as an option for officers to wear. Some individuals believe that they may look more military in appearance. That may be. However, there is a medical benefit to that. I've always believed that it's not as much how the officer appears when they're contacting individuals, it's more about how they carry themselves is what defines the officer and how people ultimately judge the individual. So but I did want to share that piece too, that the logic behind the additional load-bearing vest. And then the other part of the appearance conversation is our police cars. We have six marked patrol vehicles. When I came here, all six of them, none of them had light bars on them. All of them had semi-subdued police lettering on the side of the vehicles. It's always been my belief that we are not trying to hide from anybody. That was never the intent, but there was some some logic behind that as far as making it easier to catch, you know, drunk drivers and those types of things. But I'm more interested in visibility. I want people to know that we're out there. Having the light bar on top of the vehicle is a safety feature. It proves the visibility, especially when we get involved in pursuits. We've now also improved the brightness of the lettering on the side of the vehicle and actually made it a little bit bigger as well. So two years ago, when we replaced a vehicle, we went to the light bar designed with a bigger lettering. And then we've got our two newer vehicles are also have light bars and the brighter side lettering on the vehicle. So now we have half of our fleet are the newer style. And then as we replace cars, we will review and in all likelihood, continue down that model. Any questions, parents? All right, training, I'm just going to touch on that again. I covered all the different types of training that a police officer receives in the police academy to include the types of classes that are in the academy and also post-academy, some of the ongoing training and also some of the perishable skills training. I do just want to remind everybody, because the question came up in terms of do police officers have enough training? I suppose police officers will never have enough training, but there's also a point where they also have to be out on the street protecting the public versus spending all their time in training as well. But I think overall, on balance, we do a pretty good job of making sure that our officers have the appropriate level of training. I think our police academy does an exceptional job of training at DPSST. They are the only game in the state. You can't go to other areas and get training and become a police officer in Oregon. California, for example, you can go to the community college and receive academy training. There's multiple academies throughout the state. They are all certified, but at the same time, I don't think you get the consistency of training that you get from the DPSST academy here in Salem. That academy is 16 weeks. And then once the academy, once the recruit graduates from the academy, they're put into a field training program. That's anywhere from three to four months where they're spending time with anywhere from three to four other officers. So in that that time alone, they receive about 1,280 hours of training just before they're even put out by themselves. And then once they're placed on their own, they're still basically in training. They're on probation. They're still monitored by other police officers. And then we have our daily training bulletins. We have our regular ongoing training. We do in-house and we have training we do outside the organization too. So the training is ongoing with a focus on contemporary topics such as de-escalation, racial profiling, implicit bias, and some of the contemporary topics. I suspect we will be seeing a lot more of that. We're all looking forward to, once we get through the COVID crisis, we can actually participate more training. But in the meantime, we're going to be looking at all types of in-house training that we can do through other means to get through this. So anything else? Any questions on training?
Yes, this is Counselor Brownson. Just to, when you when you hire a police officer, what's the sort of minimum education requirements coming into it? And and the type of education? And is there a preference? Is there a level that you like to see beyond a minimum?
Yes, Counselor. First off, the requirement to have a high school diploma. And then it's required to have a two-year college degree. However, there are exceptions for experience. It's not necessarily required that they have a degree in criminal justice or police science. It can be a related field, but but that is the basically the minimum requirement. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question also. And that is for officers, and I'm referring to some reports nationwide of officers who may have a history of using excessive force, yet they continue to be employed. So what is the policy in Astoria?
Thank you, Counselor. Two things, I would say number one is that we do a very thorough background investigation on every applicant, whether they are a lateral transfer or whether they're an entry-level transfer. But it doesn't matter if you're working in another law enforcement agency. We will conduct a thorough background investigation. The actual application packet that the applicant fills out is 26 pages long to include references, previous employers, neighbors, just about everybody you can imagine, family members. Talks about criminal history, financial history. It goes very, very deep into their backgrounds. We do a very thorough background investigation. And then after that, they have an interview with a psychiatrist or psychologist. So that's that's the in-house screening part. The other part, I will tell you that I'm proud of what we do here in Oregon is the certification and decertification process. So once an officer graduates the academy, they are certified as a police officer. If an officer is accused of misconduct, it is reviewed by the state. There are certain mandatory fields that an officer is automatically decertified. And then there's other areas that an officer will be, it goes to a 28-person commission to make a decision that that officer can be decertified. So if there's misconduct that rises to the level of decertification, they cannot be a police officer anywhere in this state. So that that, I think, is an excellent vehicle to prevent bad officers from coming to work here in Astoria or any other city and county in the state for that matter. Not every state has that level of certification, decertification program. I think I reported in my previous report that in a five-year period, there was over 200 some police officers actually decertified over that five-year period. And it sounds like a lot, and it is a lot, especially when that number should be zero. But out of the thousands of officers that have served throughout that time period, it's a relatively small percentage, still a big number. So hopefully, that answers your question, Counselor.
It does, thank you.
Chief Spalding, can you give a couple of examples of maybe what would result in decertification?
I would say oftentimes, it's committing a crime. For example, like if an officer commits a theft, that would be something that could be, that could be decertified for. So pretty much committing most crimes will get an officer decertified. I don't know off the top of my head the list of all the mandatory type things. However, examples of excessive force could get an officer decertified. Dishonesty, lying type offenses will get an officer decertified. So it's a pretty extensive list, but it would be a lot of the things that I think most of us would believe that an officer should never be hired or should even be a police officer if they committed a particular offense. It would probably be on that list.
Thank you.
And I'd be happy to get a copy of that list for you if you'd like.
That's okay, thank you.
Police training. So let's see here, I want to talk just briefly. Question I've received a fair amount of interest in is social media posts. And, you know, when does it rise to the level of a crime? And again, this is where individuals' right to free speech and the First Amendment right to express themselves, people can do that pretty freely on social media with not a lot of restriction. And most often, the types of things that we're asked about is, you know, somebody making a threat. And in order for to have the crime of menacing, generally speaking, you have to have the element of immediacy. You have to be able to carry out the threat immediately. And on social media, that's hard to do in many cases. I will say that the threats that come to our attention on social media, if it's something that's occurring in our city, we will investigate it. We will look into it, especially when we're talking about something involving the schools. Because that's oftentimes where those come to our attention. But if it's something that somebody's making a threat about, you know, if it's just kind of, I don't know, I'll even say half in jest, but we've seen some that, you know, you could imply from the message that somebody is talking about killing somebody. Obviously, we take those very seriously. But it's, again, it would be very difficult to get any form of a prosecution or take any criminal action against somebody just for making a statement of their own opinion on social media. So I just wanted to address that topic since we do get a fair amount of questions in terms of how those are handled. Anything else to add? So I think that actually brings me to a close. I do want to say in closing that we very much appreciate the counsel and the mayor's support of the police department and also really appreciate our community's support. You know, some of the posts we put out there and some other comments that we're receiving from the community have been overwhelmingly positive. I know there's been some individuals who feel that maybe we should be handling some of these protesters a little bit differently, but there's a rationale behind the way we're handling these. We continue to make adjustments. We take feedback from our community. We take feedback from our councilor, mayor and our city manager. And we're always looking for ways to improve. We're not perfect, but we try and we're always learning. And I'd like to say that I think we do a pretty good job in our community. And I say that because that's what I hear from our community with the overwhelmingly positive support. And we really enjoy that. And it makes our job easier to police in this community. And we just appreciate that. So with that, that concludes my points I wanted to share with you today. And so I'm more than happy to entertain any questions.
And Chief, I know there have been some questions, and in other cities have been questions about policy on tear gas and rubber bullets, those types of weapons. Could you address that?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm glad you mentioned that because I actually had that on my list, and I must have glossed over it, so let me grab my notes here. Well, what I will say about policy on tear gas, tear gas canisters, pepper ball, those types of tools, I'll call them, we do not have any of those tools here in the city of Astoria. I will tell you that we do have those if we were to call a mutual aid type event. The county does possess many of those types of tools. Many of those tools are also devices that are used in barricaded subject and situations. So it's not just for riot-type situations. Just because they have it doesn't mean they're going to be used for riots. In the type of situation where we would actually have a need for something like that, it's going to be a pretty serious situation where we are calling mutual aid. If we called all the resources we had in our county alone, we may or may not be able to handle it if it was a big enough event. We had an event a couple, maybe a week or so ago where we had upwards of 800 people. And, you know, fortunately, they're mostly peaceful protesters, but had that gone bad, we would have had a situation where we would have had to call for assistance from not only in our county, but in all likelihood, we might have had to call for assistance outside the county. Many of you may have been around for the seaside riots back in 99. And that was a situation where they had Washington County deputies come out to assist. And tear gas, I understand, may have been deployed at that time. So very rare in a situation that we would ever need to use that. However, it is tools that we have at our disposal, and I could potentially see a need if we had an event that was so bad that we were actually looking to protect life and property in our community.
Chief Spalding, Counselor Brownson, I just want to go back to the protester and counterprotester situation, because that seems to be one of the things that really has a lot of people upset is the confrontational aspect. And you talked about it, and I have an email here, somebody sent me that says, "Through Oregon Revised Statutes, Crime and Punishments," and I can forward you the link and whatnot, but it has for, "A person commits the crime of harassment if the person intentionally, A, harass or annoys another person by either A, subjecting such a person to offensive physical contact," which we sort of addressed, and that seems pretty obvious. And then B, "publicly insulting such other person by abusive words or gestures in a manner intended or likely to provoke a violent response." And maybe you were talking about that aspect of it and trying to nuance how you determine at what point somebody is actually looking to provoke a violent response. And it seems to me that if somebody's got a bullhorn in somebody's face and they've got a sidearm, that that's not only, but it's more than intimidating, but it's looking to create a reaction. Can you kind of talk about that a little bit again and for me and for this person?
Yeah, so I'll give it a stab here, and then I'll turn it over to the deputy chief, and maybe even Mr. Henningsgard would want to weigh in as well. One of the things that we look at is to ensure that the district attorney's office is, would support prosecution on some of these offenses. And, and again, as I mentioned earlier, we're seeing a whole new dynamic here in these protest movements with, we have the protesters and counterprotesters. So it's something that we haven't had a lot of experience here in Astoria. So we're learning from other agencies and what have you, and it kind of gets back a little bit to, you know, ensuring that we're not going to engage on certain types of activity. Some of them clearly we simply don't know about unless somebody reports that to us. So maybe something is reported after the fact, but if we witness it or it's brought to our attention right away, then we will address it. Oftentimes, it may just be that we're going to address it through making a report, like I mentioned, or go to the district attorney's office. And the district attorney's office makes that decision. But some of these types of offenses, it takes a combination of both the words and the actions to rise to what may be the level of an actual criminal offense. And again, there are certain offenses that we do know that are occurring out there, but we don't have necessarily, we don't always have the resources to address every one of these types of events. So
Counselor Brownson, the harassment statute, that actual, the wording, words or conduct likely to provoke a violent response. Mr. Henningsgard can probably pop in here, but that has been deemed through case law as not constitutional. So that, that aspect of the harassment statute, we are not able to enforce. And I believe that was a ruling back in 1984. I'd have to go back to look for the case law on that. But so it's still on the books when you read it, but we are limited in what we can do based on case law.
Okay, well, thank you for clearing that up. I always find it interesting, something like that would stay on the books if it's not working, because people go to it, right? And so it is, and it is frustrating, because it's like when we talk about, for instance, the homeless downtown, and we're asking for them to be, have better behavior. And, and that we are, you know, we're, we're talking about ordinances to, if people aren't behaving well, that they can be, you know, moved out of the zone. And, you know, then we get in a situation like this where somebody is evidently, obviously not behaving well, and we can't do anything about it. I think it's kind of an interesting conundrum, but those are my comments.
So if there's any other immediate counselor comments, you can go ahead, otherwise I'm going to open it to the public. Okay, it looks like we don't have any public comments. So in that case, I mean, I did, Chief, I just want to thank you for your extremely thorough briefing. There was lots of questions and comments from the public over the last three weeks. And, and especially over the last two weeks since our large protests. So I really appreciate the transparency. Maybe, I don't know if there's a way we can make the, his portion of the recording available on our website and social media, just so that members of the public who weren't able to tune in tonight could, could see, because it was a really good presentation that covered and answered, I think, a lot of the questions that people have had, so.
And that's, and that is definitely doable, Mayor.
Okay, great. All right, if there's no more questions from counsel, then thank you, Chief, and deputy chief, very much.